Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Brisbane City Council meeting. Would you all please rise and join us for this flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present except Councilmember Davis, who is away at a training for her new position as council member.
Up in Sacramento for the Lake Melbourne City's New Council Member Conference.
Right.
All right, so adoption of tonight's agenda?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on to oral communications, I have three slips. And during past meetings, we've had folks come before us and let us know how long our meetings have lasted, going long into the evening. We've gotten emails as well. And so, you know, in the spirit of trying to keep our meetings moving along in a timely manner, we, as a council, have looked at our agenda, tried to keep it modest, but it's also something that we need to work with you as well. And so, and I guess, Clark, we had passed something, the council did, in regards to a five-minute...
Five minutes.
Yes, and so, we're going to try and work with that. So, when you're at the four-and-a-half-minute mark, I believe, a little yellow light's going to come on, and that'll give you 30 seconds to finish up. So, I hope that you can respect that five-minute time rule so that everybody that's in the audience has enough time to speak. Folks that are watching at home, we're not keeping them up late at night, as well as us, too. So, with that, I will start off with Bob Maynard.
I will try to abide by the rules. I'm Bob Maynard. I am Brisbane's trustee for the mosquito abatement district, and I have three items, two of which will be very quick. First, on February the 6th, there is a citizen science tick collection event which allows public to participate in tick-borne disease research. And I have some brochures here on it. We would like people to RSVP if they intend to participate. San Bruno Mountain Watch is helping to organize it. The second item is we are, the district is celebrating 100 years of public health on Tuesday, January 26th, from 3:00 to 7:00 at the headquarters on Rollins Road in Burlingame. And there are going to be children's activities, demonstrations and tours, insect displays, and an opportunity to meet the staff. The district is the oldest one in the country and also has one of the most sophisticated laboratories in the state. So, it's a pretty nifty place to go visit. There are lots of insects on display in the place, including a mosquito room, which is sort of itchy feeling.
It's not like one of those butterfly places where you walk in and see...
No, it's not like a butterfly room at all.
That would be very appealing.
And we hope that lots of people will show up, and there is no notification required. You just show up. And I will leave some brochures in the back. The third thing is quite a bit more serious. Assemblyman Richard Gordon has presented and passed a law intended to reduce the size of boards of directors of mosquito districts. It's AB 1362. The national, or rather, the state association, the MEVCA, the Mosquito and Vector Control Association of California, is opposed to it. The Board of Trustees took a count of its members last week, and the majority of the board is also opposed to it. The argument is that having large boards is inefficient, and it was also pointed to a fraud that we had five years ago, long since gone. At that time, the only person with a financial background on the board was me, and I was on the Environment Board Committee, since I hadn't intended to join the Board of Trustees to serve on a finance committee. Now, there are four CPAs on the Finance Committee, as well as a former city manager and a current city mayor. And the board is quite adequate to the task of running the district. So, there was a meeting yesterday afternoon with LAFCO, and they asked for feedback from the cities as to their position about it. So, I'm hoping that the city council will be able to respond to that request. So, if there's a desire for more information from me, I'm quite willing to provide it.
Thank you for the information. What size are they trying to limit? Does this bill limit the board's size?
They're talking about bringing it down to five or seven. We currently have 21, which is large, but when the north and west side of the county agreed to join the district about a dozen years ago and passed a parcel tax as well, one of the arguments for it was that all the cities would be represented, which is why we have so many, we have 20 cities in the county. And we feel, a number of us, especially from the north and the west cities, feel that we would be sort of double-crossing the citizens who voted for the parcel tax on that condition.
And do you know at what point AB 1362 is in the process?
It passed the assembly yesterday with modifications. It has not gone through the Senate yet. And it was LAFCO's request that the cities provide information from their city councils on whether, what their feeling is of the cities.
You know, Bob, maybe you can send us some more information on it? You can email Sherry, and she can get it to us.
Sure.
And then, those other couple of items, give that information to Sherry, and we'll make sure that it goes on next door.
Okay, sure.
And the Citizens of Brisbane Facebook site, so that that information can get out. I think the tick collection.
Given the items.
Okay, good.
So, I just got the information about LAFCO late yesterday, so...
Okay, no problem. All right, Bob, we appreciate all the hard work you do in this area, keeping us safe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Sherry, when the yellow light went on, it like flashed and then it was off, so is it possible that it could be a 30-second warning so that then the person can wrap up their presentation?
So, it's preset to go on 30 seconds before the time is up? And I don't, there's no way that I can control that tonight to change it?
Okay, no, so it...
It should have come on 30...
It flashed yellow and then went right to red.
Yeah, I'll try to pay attention to what it's doing. If it's malfunctioning, I could have somebody look at it after the meeting, but not, I won't be able to do anything at the moment.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, next up is Tom Heinz. Yes. You can always show up at the next meeting. But that's very nice of you to congratulate Madison Davis on her election to the city council. Thank you, Tom. Dana? Dana Dilworth?
Hi, Mr. Mayor and council members. On December 21st, there's a group of citizens who submitted a petition, a letter of, anyway, it's a document that we had hoped would be on the agenda. And when I spoke with Sherry about it not being on the 7th, the meeting of the 7th, she thought it would be on tonight's agenda, and it doesn't appear to be. And the reason it's more important than just a written communication, but you don't provide any link to that communication, which is rather difficult to understand what the public has said if it's not in the agenda. But the citizens are concerned. Citizens are concerned that you aren't following the law and that you aren't protecting the citizens. We're concerned that the staff is making decisions about uses that aren't permitted, but through a liberal interpretation. They, things are happening, and it was evidenced by the ordinance 5, I don't have all the material in front of me, and I'm 599, because it, the action was to basically grandfather in some uses that had been permitted but were clearly not in our legislation for that. Their citizens are concerned that the staff tells one thing, but that the public records don't reflect it. We were told through the process of ordinance 599 that all the landowners had been informed, but the records, the public record, didn't reflect any circulation of the document to any body of people, although it was said that that was in the public record. We're concerned that the documents entered into the public record are not on file, and I specifically, at planning commission level, put about 80 sheets of documents in about data farms, about energy use, and they're not in the file. So, it's a big concern when information is being presented, but it disappears, and that you are doing such cursory notes about what goes on in the meetings, that it actually is creating a burden to the public. Citizens are concerned that you are giving public land away, and a specific example is the Parkside Plan. Have you told the public that the land across on Bay Shore, which was, we call George Horowami's gas station, and the lands that the city, that we own as a citizen body are now designated to be housing? It's not that it's, I don't approve it, it's not, it's that you have not told the citizens that you are taking away their public land in order to do this Parkside Plan. And what is coming forward is not what was discussed during the housing element, it's something that has since evolved, and so citizens are concerned. You never asked about if the public wants to give that land away. This Sunday, you have a goal-setting meeting, and I highly recommend that every citizen of this town attend your goal-setting meeting at Doubletree Hotel from 12 to 3 o'clock, because that's where these decisions get made. And I saw it back when SEPI was on the council, I've been to a couple of these meetings, because how in the world would these other things come up if they're not discussed in the public? And you're not listening. The public and the planning commission have asked for a review of the general plan so that they can put a balance of what's in front of them before the baylands and what has come before them, since they weren't here for the general plan process. And I understand, through whatever avenue, it was denied. I'm sorry, the public needs to know this imbalance. So, I have lots of comments about your meeting on where you are saying, we are wondering if the community goals and expectations have been met, and you wouldn't get the threat of a lawsuit if you thought that you were meeting the needs of this community. So, in closing, since you don't want to hear anything else from me, there are a number of citizens who are willing to put up considerable resources to let you know, because you're not listening to us. You're not listening to the citizens, and we feel that there's a train wreck about to happen, and we're just wondering, do we jump in front now or later? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dana. I just want to make just a couple, two quick comments. One is that we are having our goal-setting meeting, and it is a public meeting, and so any member of the public can attend. Also, you know, the land across Bay Shore, we are looking at that for housing, but that's for workforce housing, that's for government employees, you know, some of our, you know, and again, it's all about looking at, you know, options. Nothing's set in stone, it's just we're evaluating it with the community to look at providing housing for, providing housing for our first responders, so folks that, you know, police officers or public works persons, but that's just something that we might look into. Nothing is set at all in that. All right, so, next up, Paul Bouskell.
Paul Bouskell, Brisbane resident. Thank you, Mayor and council members. So, I was going to speak and had some stuff here that I wanted to read, if our written communications that Dana had just mentioned were going to be presented this evening, but it doesn't seem as though they are.
I have it here, it'll, it's part of the record for tonight.
It's going to be read?
No.
Okay, so, what that is, is unfortunately, we missed, because there had been two meetings, and had we been at the first discussion about the rezoning, we could have filed and actually, with our letter of intention, could have led to a referendum, and had there not been any mitigated or any plans to change the decision that was made, it could have led to a recall, and that would have been unfortunate. I just want to read a letter that was a response to our inquiry to an attorney that we had to hire. Unfortunately, you guys, as a council and staff, have very good attorneys, and we, as citizens, don't have the same counsel as you do. We have to hire our own. Something doesn't seem right there. I mean, our property taxes go towards paying for this community's representation through staff, and, you know, our city attorney should be able to step in when there's something that's not right, and I'm going to read what's not right. This is a letter from our attorney, which I'm sure you got as well. It says that he feels that our objections are entirely non-frivolous, which means this isn't just a group of citizens that are up in arms about a small situation here in this community, it's a big deal, okay? You know, Mayor, you had mentioned one time at your meeting that you were elected by this community to make decisions for this community, okay? The handful of people that are here, sometimes regularly, are the only people from this community that come down here to voice their concerns, their support, and everything else that makes this community what it is, okay? He says that he doesn't believe that our objections are entirely non-frivolous. They obviously take, the city has obviously taken advantage and have likely segmented the review processes by listing data centers as permitted use in the M1 zone. That means that also, although a specific data center project was not approved, it could be in the future, it could be in the future, now be approved without discretionary review process, okay? What's happened at VWNR and the other sites that were just rezoned totally fall within Section 15183. But if you read down through the sections and you get to 15183J, okay, this section does not affect any requirement to analyze potentially significant off-site cumulative impacts if those impacts were not adequately discussed in the prior EIR. If a significant off-site or cumulative, cumulative impact was adequately discussed in the prior ER, then this section may be used as a basis for excluding further analysis of the off-site or cumulative impact, okay? The city attorneys who advised you knew that what you did was not illegal, what you did was totally within your right to make this decision based on the information they gave you. However, what they did not, or it's our belief that you weren't informed, otherwise you probably would have made your decision based on this, is Section J, okay, which I just read. And it may be exempt from a new EIR, all right, but not an environmental analysis, which wasn't done, okay? Further analysis is required because of contamination. And all of this comes second to our general plan, which is what we hold to be in the highest regard in this community. And Policy 172 states, it establishes, established that it is the highest priority that contaminated lands in Brisbane be remediated. Thus, J governs and sequo was not expansively interpreted as required by Policy 172. So, if you could do me a favor, if you could address council as to why we didn't look at that Policy 172 and make that the highest importance in this community, I want to thank you for your time, and, you know, it's the last thing we want to do. You know, lawsuit wasn't a monetary lawsuit, it wasn't to have anybody replaced, but it could have led to that, because it was that serious of a violation of this community's trust, that when we make decisions, we go to great lengths to make sure that the decision that was made was not rash. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Michael, do you want to comment on that? I mean, I don't even have any information in front of me, so probably not at this time. Okay. But we'll address it, yeah, you can, you want to give it to Sherry, please? Okay, so, next person is Beth Grossman. Okay. Peter, you want to come on up, then? I don't have a slip for you.
You don't have a slip for me? There should be one there. Didn't I fill one, didn't I fill one out, Sherry, and give it to you? So, are we having a procedural error here?
We are.
I'm sorry.
Flew away.
Yes.
No, it's hard.
Okay, thank you. All right, Peter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and residents here, and those of us at home. My name is Peter Grace, and as you know, I represent the concerned citizens of Brisbane. We are the group advocating for relief from noise, the noise generated by ever-increasing numbers of aircraft flying over our community. I've provided each of you with a copy of a letter our group has sent to the FAA. In that letter, we asked the FAA simply to investigate why so many aircraft are flying over Brisbane. The letter includes statistics that clearly show planes are being diverted from standard flight paths, the prescribed procedures, and flying over our heads. Our letter, we believe, is well-timed, because the FAA is currently doing a study called Phase 1, and it's the appropriate time for the FAA to consider why procedures are not being followed. We are fortunate to have both Senator Jerry Hills and Representative Jackie Spears' offices working in support of our efforts. Tonight, we ask that you add your support to our cause. It would be a powerful endorsement if you, as a council, issued a letter to the FAA. The solution may take time, but it starts with a single step. We're asking you to take the first step with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. And I just want to let my council colleagues know that Peter and I had coffee this morning, and we talked about the letter, and I think it's a very, very strong letter, and we're going to work on it together to make it even stronger and hopefully bring it back to the council by our next meeting, and then we can discuss it, it'll be on the agenda, and hopefully we can all support it. All right, so, next up is...
Can I just make one quick comment? I would like to request that we put this on an agenda item as soon as possible, and I thank you for your support on doing that.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
And I just wanted to also mention that Peter, I met with Peter yesterday along with another citizen, Jay Patel. And I'm really appreciative of his efforts and agree that something needs to be done. So, I'm looking forward to seeing it on the agenda at the next meeting.
Yes.
I will say that I also met with Peter last week to discuss some of the issues.
Thank you, Peter.
I guess, I guess at risk of extending the meeting, right? Yeah. So, yeah, I met with Peter on Tuesday also.
He's been busy.
Actually, you know, went over, you know, Peter, I do appreciate your work, you know, the, you know, as I indicated Tuesday, of the stuff that, you know, Cliff, that you've been working on. And it's some interesting data, you know, that was presented and, you know, gave you some feedback on who we're addressing the letter to, you know, and as I indicated to Peter, let's not assume that, because this guy's a Western Regional Director, that he even knows what we're talking about on the, on the acronyms, because I don't believe that he does. And that, you know, you got to kind of lead the horse with the carrot, you know, to the bucket of oats. And so, I, Cliff, that you're going to work with Peter on that and hopefully get staff involved too, you know, to where we have, you know, a very succinct, powerful letter with the data to back it up, because, and that's the most important.
That is the most important.
And it's, the way you presented the data, Peter, it's very evident what the issue is, and it's one thing causing another. It's a cause and effect. And if that's eliminated, I mean, there's a simple solution to it. So, if their rules are followed the way they say they should be...
Absolutely.
We wouldn't have a problem.
Wouldn't have a problem.
Yeah. Come on up.
All right, Peter.
What I'd like to clarify is, I've already sent the letter to the FAA. After the discussions this morning, it became apparent that things would be delayed, and the FAA is studying at the moment in Phase One the changes being proposed. And we need to get that late, that information in straightaway. So, I've already sent the letter to the FAA as laid out, and there's a copy, which I sent to Sherri early this evening, which is in your package. I would still very much like to ask you, as a council, to support the letter that the concerned citizens of Brisbane have sent to the FAA. It's a really important issue for all of us. Madison Davis said that, who is not here, she said that when she was electioneering, there were three issues that she was heard constantly about: parking, noise in Brisbane from the aircraft, and the baylands. So, as I said, I've sent the letter to the FAA, and I'd like your support as council of this letter that's in your package. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I wanted to note that I also did receive several emails from other citizens, so we are hearing your concerns. And I've given some comments to Peter on a draft of the letter that he showed me, so hopefully that'll be incorporated into what we see.
Yeah, and Peter, you know, I want to commend you on your obsession with this, I guess we'll call it, and the other folks who've been working on it, that, you know, it really does require, you know, not just from a council or congresspeople, but, you know, citizens to really kind of, kind of move it, move it along, and that's really important. And I know that you have done an app that makes it very easy to report the aircraft noise, and perhaps that's something that, you know, we could present to the citizenry also. I know you gave us the...
To be honest, the app comes from the group in Santa Cruz, who have changed the dynamic completely. Before, the airport director's report was 3,000, it was given each month, 3,000 complaints in a month. Five days ago, it was 8,000 complaints in a day. There's a huge resentment about what's happened, what the FAA has done, and the FAA needs to be held accountable. And what's happened is Spear, Eshu, and Farr, our congressional representatives, have heard what's been going on, and they've forced the door to the FAA open. And the FAA has come out and is now listening through these public consultative meetings and doing, and they've published what they're going to study in Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three. Phase One started in October of last year. The reason I sent the letter so quickly is that we don't know when Phase One is going to get closed, and I don't want to end up in the situation where Phase, the Phase One door is shut, and they now want to Phase Two, and they're not going to consider why 50% of the flights that fly on the main procedure over Brisbane are not following the prescribed procedure and ending up with 95% of the noise complaints of the noise monitor. There's something seriously wrong, and you, as a council, I hope will support our efforts from the concerned citizens of Brisbane to highlight this. The only way we're going to get this changed is if our congressional representatives, our senate representatives, our local politicians, the San Francisco Round Table, the board of, the San Mateo Board of Supervisors pull together and say, "This is an issue for all of us." And it's not an issue just for Brisbane. It's also, there's a downstream issue in Pacifica, where the mayor of Pacifica is wandering around with a posse of people complaining about noise. When I go to noise meetings, there are probably 15 people from Pacifica supporting her. We need to build bridges across to other communities. Indeed, I will try and do, start doing that tomorrow. I've got good contacts with one person in Pacifica, and we need to work together as communities to stand up and draw attention to the FAA not following their written procedures for some reasons. It needs to be addressed, and we believe the reason is that the flights that are coming from Oakland are being turned early, and they're being turned into the flight tracks, the flights from SFO. And the controller at Oak, the controller who's managing the flight from Oakland and creates the safety and separation issue is the same one who moves the flight from SFO because of safety and separation concerns. So, the person who creates the danger, the safety and separation issues, is the person that fixes it and pushing, and he's pushing the flights, or the person is pushing the flights over Brisbane. I describe that to each of you and show you on the diagrams which I enclosed in your package. Thank you very much for your time and your willingness to meet with me and come and ask questions now, and the improvements you've all made to the suggestions in the letter. Thanks a lot, Clark, for making me realize, oh, yeah, because I know the acronyms, it doesn't mean that everybody else who's reading them does. And thanks a lot, Laurie, as well, for your comments as well, that were really helpful. And thanks a lot, Cliff, as well, for your finding out and providing us the key for how we go and analyze these flights. Because without that circle around the waypoint at STICS, this would never have happened. We'd be unable to hold the FAA accountable. And also, you worked with Cindy Gibb, the aircraft representative consultant at the Round Table, for confirming that the figures we got for the November 1st to 15th are reproduced in each month, January to October of 2015. So, the period I've taken and analyzed, I believe, is representative. And thanks a lot, Laurie, as well, for your help. Thanks for all your time.
All right, thank you, Peter. You know, before I have you come up, Beth, so I had sent council some written communications. I was going to bring it up during the council matters, but just to give everybody an update on the last work, working group, technical working group meeting at SFO. So, some of the takeaways that came from that meeting was exactly where Peter's coming from, to make sure that the flights that are coming out of SFO that are the stick procedure, that they stay chartered and they fly over the waypoint, which then will keep the planes over the water longer and have them turn left over the baylands, not over residential areas of Brisbane. Also, looking at, making sure that the Oakland flights that are basically flying to the same waypoint later on their journey, which is the port waypoint, that those flights also not be vectored so that they can be compatible with each other. We're also looking at having, implementing this operation called 050. Instead of having the planes go up the coast and make a left over Brisbane, they make a U-turn and head down the bay. This would be from 12 to 5:00. So, those hours when we're trying to sleep.
12:00 AM.
Yes, 12:00 AM to 5:00 AM. And then also looking at some opposite direction departures. So, late at night, there's not that much air traffic. And so, sometimes, and they used to do it more in the past, not so much now, where they fly south. These are larger planes over the bay, heading down the coast, or, you know, down the bay and then, then east. So, we have the SFO Round Table meeting on the 3rd, I believe it's the 3rd, this Wednesday coming up, either the 2nd or the 3rd. Sorry, I don't have my calendar in front of me. But I hope that you contend that meeting. All right, so, Beth.
Good evening, Honorable Counsel, I'm Beth Grossman. I just want to underline everything that Peter said and thank him for all of his tireless support and commitment to this. It has a really direct effect on me personally. It's like seriously degrading quality of life, going from 5:30 in the morning until 1:00 at night. I've been documenting the flights on the app that Peter talked about, and I've been clocking between 100 and 150 flights that fly over my house every day. In fact, some of them are so intense, they shake the house, that things fall off bookshelves, and they set off the motion, the light motion detectors in our yard in the middle of the night. So, I'm really living in fear that some of those really big planes aren't going to make it over the mountain, and that would, you know, I don't want to, that would be like a horrible scenario to even think about, but let's not wait until it gets to that point. I'm also seriously concerned about the amount of jet fuel pollution that we're breathing in, that many flights, think about it. And I'm not even documenting all of them. I have something by my bed. I just sit there every time one goes by. All day long, I work at home. I can't have the windows open if I'm trying to have a conversation on the telephone. It's gotten to the point where it's like pretty much between every minute to three minutes, there's a flight that goes over my house. So, I really feel that time is of the essence. I want, I want to thank you for your support. Getting this letter agreed upon and sent out immediately is important because it is soon becoming the standard shortcut that they're taking. And if we don't step in now, we're not going to be able to go back. So, thank you so much for all your support. Oh, I want to also mention that I've been in contact frequently with Jackie Spear's office, and they say they need to hear from you. So, that underlines more, again, the reason why it's important to get this letter sent. And CC, Jackie Spear's office as well, if you would. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
If I could, Cliff, on this, I mean, since you're the mayor and you're really our representative for the Airport Round Table and really have been on top of this, the whole thing, I'm okay with you just doing the letter, not bringing it back to the council. If you want.
You know, it's up to the council members if, if they want to do that.
Well, I've already reviewed the letter, and assuming my input has been incorporated, you know, I'm comfortable largely with the way it's written, so I understand time is of the essence, so I think that's an excellent suggestion.
And just to let you know, I mean, so, this initiative that's being put forth by the FAA, we do not know when they're going to engage us. So, the Round Table has taken a proactive approach in, in putting together these packages for each procedure. In our situation with the STIC, and then trying to create this new procedure, this 050, which is a, you know, it's an optional procedure. We want to make sure that it's a RNAV procedure that they use on a regular basis, because if the planes are flying over the water and making a U-turn, they're not bothering anybody, especially at the, those late hours of the evening. So, I mean, I, I heard what you're saying, Clark. I think it would be better to have, to have it come before us and just have you see the letter and give your approval as, as a council. I think it'll make it a more powerful letter.
I would be fine either way with the mayor drafting a letter with his signature on behalf of the council, or using the template that, that Peter has provided, or if it needs to come back so that we have everyone's official signature and doing a quick review at our next meeting, I think would be also good. But one thing I wanted to note is that when you live in the country and you live on a dirt road, you plant a tree at the corner, because otherwise, the cars keep cutting the corner shorter and shorter and shorter, and pretty soon, that road isn't really where the road's supposed to be. And I see that happening with the planes going overhead. If the procedure is that every time they get turned a quarter mile or a half mile or whatever beyond, before their waypoint, that becomes the norm. And even if we don't feel that the letter is going to be as strong as we could be, or we find a better way, or reinvent the procedures, if we start with our information we have now and build on it, it doesn't preclude us from another letter. So, I think being early and being strong is something that we should try to do.
Absolutely. Okay, so, Emily. Emily Trachero, Trachar, sorry. How you doing, Emily?
Hi, Mayor, hi, council members. I'm reading this letter. Peter just handed it to me, but for Barb Bouchard, she stated it, "January 21. Honorary members of the City Council, I'm writing to request that all City Council members support the letter that Peter Grace has presented this evening, asking that the FAA investigate the cause of deviation from the STIC flight procedures that lead to an increased level of aircraft noise pollution over our community. Let me share with you the reasons that I feel strongly about aircraft noise over our community. Like many people in Brisbane, aircraft noise disrupts my sleep. I'm regularly awakened by aircraft over our house at 5:30 or 6:00 AM and well after 11:00 PM or midnight. This is not the issue that bothers me the most, though. Whenever anyone talks about aircraft noise, we all emphasize that safety is paramount. I don't disagree with this. The FAA's primary role is to keep our skies safe. However, by vectoring aircraft to fly directly over our community, the air traffic controllers at TRACON are creating a safety issue here on the ground for my young children, 3 and 5 years old, and countless others. We live on Monterey Street within walking distance of our most, of most amenities in town, so we walk, cycle, or ride scooters everywhere and spend a lot of time outside. When an airplane thunders overhead, my kids can't hear me yell, "Stop, wait, slow down, back up," or move to the side of the sidewalk to let an elderly person pass. My kids can't hear cars starting or idling just before they back out of a driveway, and they're too short to be seen through the rear window of a car backing up. Those same drivers who can't see my kids behind their cars can't hear them either when an airplane thunders overhead. The danger of one or both of my children being hit by a car or knocking down an elderly person because they can't hear is front and center in my mind every time we venture out. The FAA's practice of vectoring flights to turn over Brisbane has been going on for years. It was standard practice with the previous port departure procedure, and the air traffic controllers have continued this practice with the new STIC procedure. While I applaud the SFO Round Table's proposal to implement new waypoints and altitude requirements, I fear that these changes won't reduce the FAA controller's frequent practice of vectoring flights to turn directly over Brisbane. While the FAA has the door open and claims to be willing to listen, we absolutely need to get the vectoring issue on the agenda. I support Peter Grace's proposal that the FAA must investigate the cause of deviation from the procedures, and I respectfully ask that all City Council members support the letters he has presented this evening. Thank you, Barb Bouchard. And again, I'm just reading that for her. But I do want to make my own statement that this is absolutely a health and safety issue for every resident of Brisbane. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Emily. And if Barb is watching out there, I did get your email about, you know, providing feedback on monthly basis, and that's something that I plan to do. In the next issue of Luminary, I just finished writing an article about airplane noise, so that'll be in the next issue of Luminary. James?
Hi. Hi, I just wanted to lend my support to Peter's letter and thank him, actually, for all the very hard work he's done for this community. And I've lived here about five years, and I ran into Peter when he was working on the tank farm issue, and he called me up and we started talking about airplane noise. And since then, I've been helping him collect data and work on things, and I've done a lot of work with Cliff, and, I'm sorry, is that better?
It can come out.
I'm too tall, I guess. I'm too tall, I guess. Okay, so, and I really want to thank Cliff, it's a thankless job for what he's doing on the roundtable, so my personal thanks. And it's just a great effort and we really need to do this. It's, it's really a problem, I didn't realize, I thought, you know, it was just me and my imagination, I'm more sensitive, and I, and we used to be the outlier on the, the noise reports from the roundtable, we'd be the biggest bar in all the other communities of these little ones. And now the situation has reversed, we're the smallest, we've got thousands, thousands of complaints every day from the region due to this next gen, and it's not just San Francisco, this is across the country. And so, it's a really serious issue, and I want to thank you all for working on it.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. Thank you for, Tom? Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to speak again. I think tonight you've shown utter, another utter disregard for public input by not reading that letter that was sent. So, I think the public deserves to hear what was in that letter, so I'm going to read most of it. "To the City Clerk of Brisbane and Council Members, we, the undersigned, ask the Brisbane City Council to rescind Ordinance Number 599 and Zoning RZ-2-15 adopted on November 19, 2015 for the following reasons. The ordinance and zoning text amendment are not consistent with Brisbane's 1994 General Plan and other applicable laws. Specifically, and notwithstanding other pertinent violations, we draw your attention to Brisbane's General Plan Policies 172 to 175 whereby you have not required risk assessments and full technical studies for the multiple properties impacted. Additionally, introduction of Resolution Number 2015-47 on the date of adoption of Ordinance 599 indicates your concern about the inconsistency of the zoning code with the 1994 General Plan. Adequate environmental review for the potential impacts were not studied in the 1994 General Plan process, and mitigation measures to reduce those impacts to nonsignificance have not been considered or developed as required by law. Information regarding site conditions for current and future uses is insufficient, as all properties and adjacent properties impacted have not been studied or were not available in advance for diligent review. This has created a piecemealed environmental process in violation of SEQA. We ask that you suspend any recent and new land use decisions until completing a full update to our 1994 General Plan, including, but not limited to, the following. A full review of the contaminants and conditions in the lagoon, correction of open space definitions, create an energy use element or guidelines for energy and water resource management, and consider sea level rise among other concerns raised by the public. Thank you."
Thank you. Okay. Paul? It's a different, different matter than what you spoke on before?
Oh, well, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, thank you, Paul Biscal, Brisbane resident. Councilmember Conway just mentioned that if the FAA is in violation, that they should be told about it. Well, you know, when asked if the city attorney had anything to say about what I had mentioned regarding the VWNR site and the other zoning changes that were made, he had no comment. I would have thought that he had a complete understanding of everything that entailed that decision. You guys just discussed at great lengths what your intentions are to submit a letter to the FAA. This wasn't even on the agenda. Okay? Why wouldn't my comments have the same acknowledgement and energy that you just put in about their concerns regarding our community? You know, I thought if you make a decision, it had to be on the agenda. I thought if we come up for oral communications, it's just us presenting something and you maybe having something to say about it. You guys had nothing to say about what I had asked, other than asking the city attorney if he had anything to say. He said at some other date he would come up with something. Why do we have to wait for some other date to come up with something? You know, I'm just curious, I mean, it's like, you make decisions based on, at the moment, you know, you're making a decision on this issue with the FAA under oral communications, so, I mean, you have liberties to do what you want to do, it seems. So, where's the input on what I had asked about? That's a big concern.
All right, you know, thank you, Paul. You, you, you make a good comment. Thank you. We need to, we do need to be consistent, so, and, and, you know, I, I-
I really wanted to respond to that.
I, no, I, we need to move on, though. Okay, so, consent calendar. So, we have some items on the consent calendar, how-
I'd like to remove item A and B.
A and B is Clark. Any other items to be removed, or?
If not, I'll move adoptions C through G.
I just want to note that I had submitted some, what I think are typographical changes on the minutes, and so we, we do have a updated-
Which minutes?
On, on-
They're B, right?
A, let's see. A, B, and C, it was all of them, yeah. And so we have updated versions at the date.
So, you want to remove C?
I don't think they need to be removed, do they, Sherry? No, but I just want to note that we have an updated version of the minutes with those corrections.
Okay, so, Clark, you made a motion, do I have a second for the rest of the-
Second.
C through G, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Just, and thank you, Laurie, for doing yours before. Excuse me, on item A, I just wanted to do some spelling issues, and that was on page one, meeting to be closed in honor of, and that's Barbara Berniest, that's spelled B-E-R-N-I-E-S-T. And that's on page one and both page seven. And that's all I have for that.
Okay.
And then, item B, actually Laurie, this is one that you had caught in your minutes, is where there was a third paragraph on page four, that Mr. Brown had said that the Super Bowl was picked because of $1 million people.
Right.
Just eliminate the dollar sign.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Got that.
All right.
So, with that amended minutes, I'd make a motion to approve items A and B.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That takes us to new business. Item A, consider reappointing current planning commissioners whose terms expire in January 2016 to terms that would end April 30th, 2016. So, we have a staff report.
Mayor, members of the council, as indicated, the three planning commissioners' terms are expiring in, in this month, and each is applied to be reappointed, and several other people have also applied to be appointed to the Planning Commission. When the council met on January 7th, they expressed a desire to keep the current planning commissioners in office until the planning, the planning, the Baylands' planning process was completed, given the fact that those commissioners have been very much involved in the whole Baylands' planning process for the last few months. The thought was that the Planning Commission may be able to finish that process by the end of April, and the Planning Commission did have a discussion about that and, and sent a memo to the council which indicated, the members thought that, with effort, that they could get completed by the end of April of 2016. So, the council asked whether or not there would be a process to keep the current commissioners in office until that process is completed, and I believe there is such a process under your municipal code, which does allow for members to continue to serve until the completion of their specific term for which they were appointed. Accordingly, if you wanted to reappoint the existing commissioners, the three commissioners in question until April 30th, 2016, it's within your discretion to do so, and certainly within that period of time, if you wanted to entertain interviewing others for the position, so when that time was up, you would be able, would be in a position to either reappoint those commissioners or appoint other commissioners to serve out the rest of the term through January of 2020. If there's any questions about this process, I'd be glad to answer them.
All right, that seems in line with what we all talked about, is there any difference in, in what the direction of that, that city attorney Roush has put forward? Sherry?
I, I don't have any questions about his process. We had a memo from the Planning Commission themselves on how long they expected the deliberations to take, and I'm just wondering if we determine that we need to extend this current seating longer to accommodate their needs, that we would be able to do that in addition to the current extension that we have in place?
That is correct, you can do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
No questions?
I make a motion to reappoint three planning commissioners till April 30th, 2016, and those commissioners would be Commissioner Reinhardt-
Doe.
Commissioner Doe and Commissioner Parker.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay, next on the agenda is staff reports. Clay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is a series of meetings that are coming up, and I'll just quickly go through all those. It was earlier mentioned tonight that we will be having the council annual goal-setting session this Sunday, and that session will focus on a few things, it will focus on going over kind of a new and updated budgeting process, as well as going through your work plan update, and then a period of time during the afternoon to talk about any kinds of new projects or new initiatives that the council may want to look at. Contrary to what was said earlier, the goal-setting sessions are not a time in which council makes the final decisions on projects or planning efforts, or frankly, on anything, it's really a kind of a review of where we've been, kind of setting the stage for where we want to go in, in the upcoming year, so just want to make that clear to anybody that's listening. The second item will be on next Tuesday, which I believe is the 26th?
Yes.
Correct. The Peninsula Clean Energy Effort, there will be a workshop here at the council chambers hosted by the council, and that will start at 7:30. Representatives of the county effort on this will be, be present. If all goes well in terms of that evening and the council gives direction to move forward with the city of Brisbane joining the joint powers agreement for the CC, or PCE, that would be on your agenda sometime in, in February.
Great.
I think February 4th is what we're thinking. And then, on February 1st, will be the next workshop with the consultant on the Parkside project, and again, that will be held here in City Hall, and I believe that starts at 7:30?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's, no, it's February 1st. It's 7:00 or 7:30, it'll be on our, our website, that will be with the consultant, and it won't be a council meeting per se, but council members may, may come that night and choose to, choose to be here, so that, anyway, we, certainly we'd like to get a lot of community participation in that process, and this will be the, the second of three workshops. As you recall, we had one back last fall that was done actually out on the street, and we had a pretty robust response that day, and then there will be one further workshop later on down the line before it starts its process through the, through the council and the Planning Commission.
Question on that, would that one be, would the February 1st workshop, would the consultant be televised?
No.
Okay.
It, it, it won't be televised because it's not, it's not going to be set up where, you know, there's a dius from which, you know, there will be people conducting-
Be out here, right?
Yeah, it'll be out, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
7:00 PM.
You know, and there's one thing that I, I didn't clarify when a member of the public talked about the precise plan and the housing that, about selling city property, that there isn't any indication that we would sell any of our land in this process, so I-
No, I mean, we're early in the planning process, there's certainly no decisions have been made, and I'm sure there's a lot of ideas that have come up, and some of them probably are going to ultimately not be something the city council wants to go forward with, but, you know, people shouldn't be overwhelmed or overly concerned about an idea that they hear that maybe they don't like, you know, because I'm sure there'll be a lot of ideas out there.
Sure.
And then finally, but certainly not least, we've been getting a lot of public inquiries and concerns about growing coyote problem on San Bruno Mountain that is getting further into the urban area. We are, of course, not alone in this phenomenon here in the Bay Area, or actually throughout the state of California. Steph met a couple weeks ago with the, the state fish and wildlife personnel, and we had a pretty good meeting, and the outgrowth of that is that we're going to have a couple of community workshops for people to meet with the fish and wildlife people, also our police department will be there, other city staff will be there about various strategies that people can employ in terms of, of coyotes. And that first one will be on February 23rd, which is a Tuesday, be 7:30 here in the council chambers, and then on March 5th, I believe it's March 5th, it's the first Saturday of March, will be 10:00 AM here in the council chambers.
I heard we're importing Roadrunners.
All right, so February 23rd is the coyote meeting here in the council chambers, did you say, Clay?
February 23rd and March 5th.
Oh, so we're going to do two?
Two, yeah.
Okay.
And, and what time are those meetings?
The, February 23rd is a weeknight, and that'll be 7:30, and March 5th will be 10:00 AM.
And will information, I assume, be posted?
Oh, yeah.
About that? Okay.
So-
Trap a couple coyotes and put it around there and go.
So, so to follow up on that, last fall, when I attended the League of Cities Conference, I did attend the Fish and Wildlife presentation on coyote and other wildlife hazing projects, and it was very informative. And I, I saw something, and I'm not sure if it was on our website, about hazing of coyotes, and I just would like to put it out there that people should keep their distance until they've at least heard the presentation and know what the proper methods really are to discourage the coyotes.
Yeah, they'll, they'll hear a number of things, I mean, hazing's part of it, just good management of, you know, I mean, the coyotes are coming here because they're, they're looking for a food source, I think that's something that we all got to keep in mind in terms of how we manage food sources that are outside our properties, that's a big problem, that's a raccoon problem as well as a coyote problem. But anyway, we will have the fish and wildlife people here and, and give people some tools to work with.
Great, thank you.
Raccoons would give them a good tussle.
They would.
Well, there's, actually, what, what the guy told us, which is kind of interesting, was I guess there's been a mountain lion sighting in Golden Gate Park, and the number of coyotes in Golden Gate Park are significantly, have been declining a little bit.
Interesting.
Not suggesting that we get a mountain lion, but-
It's ecology.
There, there is a way this works, so.
Yes, yes.
Well, hopefully with the rains, the drought situation-
Survival of the fittest.
The drought situation will lessen some of the, the need for them to come in, in our urban interface.
It's a different dog and cat issue.
All right, so council- So council, mayor matters. Anybody have any subcommittees or countywide assignments they'd like to report on?
Go ahead, Laurie. Okay. I'll start. So the Ad Hoc Library Subcommittee met and talked about the new library and the funding for that, the funding plan, and also the Fiscal Administration Administrative Policy Subcommittee met, that's myself and Terry, and we talked about the reorganization, the council reorganization rules about mayor and mayor pro tem, and there was a request that we consider putting in place some written policies. So as a subcommittee, we, we didn't come to a consensus, so the idea was on whether or not we should have a policy, so, and so we're going to then turn it to the whole council and have a council workshop on whether we should have a written policy, and if so, what that policy would look like. And we had, we looked at, basically, we had, Terry had drafted for us all the policies that are, that are in place in other cities, so we have a sense of what, what they have in place. So that'll be coming, I think it'll be a, like a study session prior to a council meeting is what it'll probably look like, publicly notice, but maybe in the conference room. And then Health and Safety Subcommittee met yesterday, and we talked about medical marijuana issues with some new changes in state laws, and that'll be coming down to the council. And then we'd also talked about the putting in place a plan for outreach to the HOAs and other condos and apartments on the multi-unit housing aspect of the smoking ordinance.
Good.
Follow up on that.
All right.
So that's moving along.
Yeah, and the county staff was there with that also. And then Cliff and I met on the Baylands Subcommittee, and if you want to, Cliff.
Well, really, it was just an opportunity for you to get acquainted with what has been going on with the committee and bring you up to speed, and yeah, I'm looking forward to working with you on that, on that Subcommittee.
Yeah.
Terry?
Well, I attended a CCAG Subcommittee Report on Water Issues, and we outlined some of the goals and what the committee is going to be looking like, and didn't really firm up anything or make any decisions on that. I also attended a CCAG meeting where we had very limited items on the agenda. We mostly talked about the current leadership and salary, contract renegotiation with the executive director.
Sandy.
And so there wasn't too much to report out from that. There wasn't action. It was mostly bureaucratic or, not bureaucratic, but executive decisions. And then the workshop that Laurie and I talked about with the, having a workshop for the policy committee about the rules for reorganization, I think that, to clarify, I think Laurie, we had discussed having a meeting prior to a council meeting that we'd schedule with the mayor, putting it on the agenda for an hour prior to a regular council meeting for that discussion. So it's not that we're having a workshop per se as a standalone, but we would be bringing it back to schedule.
Make a decision, yes.
Through, through the mayor on whether we wanted to, what kind of policy we wanted it to look like.
Right. It'll be like an agenda item, but it would be before a council meeting in a, as more of a study session.
More informal setting, yes. And I just wanted to clarify that, that it wasn't a true workshop, but it would be more of a, of a discussion on, on the whole council, on, on what the goal and the purpose of that would be.
Right. Thank you.
Makes sense. And Terry, if I can just make a suggestion for the next CCAG meeting, the, the signs that are on the 280 extension heading east before you get onto 101, those metering light signs are so small that people that are waiting in line do not know that they can go, that two cars can go at a time.
The two car sign?
Absolutely. It ticks me off when you're there, and it's like, okay, I'm ready to go, and what are you doing? You stopped, you know, you can go.
Put bigger signs.
So there need to be signs that people can see.
Well, some of the metering lights that we have that, and the smart corridor system, they're going to do a test further south on the system about turning them on during weekends now, and part of that was brought up that the signage needs to be larger for that in their test area. There's been a lot of pushback from our North County people, specifically South San Francisco, that the, um, metering, metering lights on the 380 to, the 380 on...
To 101.
To 101.
North.
Are really not being, are not effective.
Yeah, because it backs up, and then you get on 101, and it's fine.
And so it's...
Irritating.
I think South City and, and that whole corridor are feeling that they are underserved by the program or not served correctly. And just getting on from, from Sierra Point onto 101 North, the metering sign ramp on light is hidden by bushes, by shrubbery getting on, so you don't even know there's, people who are unfamiliar with it don't know that there's going to be a metering light there. So there are some issues, and I will bring that up.
Even the one on the, the hook ramps going to South City heading south, most of traffic's coming north, you know, and it just, you know, we got a lot of traffic on Bay Shore and...
Backing up because of the lights.
I saw it backed all the way up halfway to the wall the other day, and people make it through that, and then they stack on these metering lights that's not even necessary because it doesn't have the traffic flow that warrants it going south at that time, and so it's kind of, it's kind of goofy. You know, I mean, I get, I understand what they're there for, but they're there to do it when you have a need for it. In this case, it's just running it...
It's running it dumb.
Yeah.
It's like, okay, from this time to this time, the lights, the metering lights are going to be on.
Whether they needed or not.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and I think that that's something that they're still working out a lot of the kinks on.
And so I know Carol's...
And North County has least, the least amount of input in respect to that, because what's good for the southern part of the county and the freeway systems there must be good for our ramp.
It's much different in the southern part of the county.
It is.
Okay. I mean, we're talking almost like apples and oranges because, you know...
But I will...
You got very dense companies that, you know, like Oracle and all this stuff that they built, and, and San Mateo, and then now going on down to Redwood City, then you hit Silicon Valley. Yeah, it's, it's a very different traffic pattern up here in the north. It's, it's different, you know, and eventually you do get there if you're going that far. But, you know, it's, you know, so I certainly, you know, understand Carol's frustration from South San Francisco that, you know, it's like...
Well, all, all the traffic stud, I shouldn't say all, many of the traffic studies that are studied by CCAG and the reports that we get are geared for more in the southern county than us, and most of the projects and the studies that they're doing for HOV lanes and hot lanes end at 380. Like, the county just stops right there.
Well, the, yeah.
It does narrow, though.
And that has always been...
Yeah.
Somewhat of the case, and it's an issue because they go over railroad tracks and they've got size issues.
The smart corridor thing that, that started, it stopped in, at 380, you know, where they would do the, you know, in case of a traffic jam, that you got the smart corridor and how it would do it. All that study stopped, and the next phase was supposed to be from South San Francisco through to San Francisco, and the monies, I guess, haven't transpired for that, but that is supposed to be the next phase.
With the amount of budget overruns that that smart system has come under, it's, it's an amazing amount of money that...
Surprise, surprise.
But I will bring it up as far as that goes, and, and I will say that South City and, well, Carol and I were both very happy that we weren't part of the test program of turning the lights on on Saturdays.
Go ahead.
On our few little exits that are, and on ramps that are brought up. The only other thing I'd like to mention is I would like to have an agenda item for, to review the concerns that the citizens brought up in regards to the letter that we did receive, and I would hope that we can do that fairly soon and with the technical expertise from our legal representatives and see how that best is addressed, because I do think that the citizens' concerns that were raised, I had many of them myself when we discussed the issue, and so I think that it would be good to try to get that on an agenda item to whatever degree we can.
Yeah, no, let's, we'll look into it, yeah. You know, and then next item is written communications and something that, you know, I'm going to need some help here, Clay and Michael, in regards to, you know, a little petition that Linda Detmer put together regarding Paul Aguilab and about potentially working for the city of Brisbane, and, you know, we have a process course for people working for the city, and so, do you want to comment on that at all, Clay?
Really not sure what to say. I suppose in terms of the context of the actual work that's being suggested, I think that that's something that we might better take up at the time we deal with the budget because that's when we deal with the services and resources.
Okay. All right. And, you know, I mean, 100 people signed that, that petition or letter, and, you know, and I just want to acknowledge folks caring about, you know, members of our society that are at risk, and, you know, it was a very nice gesture on their part. Okay. So next on the agenda...
Can I make a comment? We did have another letter, and it was in concern with the airport noise from Jill Young.
Okay.
And it was echoing...
Oh, yeah, sorry. Thank you for...
It was, it was echoing the noise issues and her concern with, with the airplanes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. So, review upcoming city council meeting schedule, and Clay, is there anything different from what you've given us before?
I don't believe so.
No.
Sure.
I just thought I would put this under mayor council matters regularly because every once in a while, it's just good to review what's coming up, and, and I've had a couple instances where someone didn't realize that there was a meeting, and I thought if I put it on the agenda, you would kind of have a regular, a look at the upcoming meetings, so...
Okay.
I bet it changes.
What's that?
I said, I bet it changes.
Yeah, it'll change, but it's just, it's just a list of meetings in case someone didn't have it on their schedule, it's a reminder of what's coming up, so...
Okay. All right. Thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I need some clarification whether or not there was council direction or support for some written response with respect to the, the matter that was raised this evening concerning the, the letter. I, I'm not sure I got clarification from the council whether you want something on a future agenda on that item or not.
So which letter are you talking about, Michael?
Talking about the, the item that, that Paul and others raised.
Oh.
Ordinance 599.
Yeah, concerning...
599, one.
Right.
So, I mean, we did, we did go through it with the, you know, with the prologis application, but this is, so what I'd like to do is, is be able to get a little bit more clarification of what is being asked and see if, have we already addressed it or not, and if we haven't, then, then it makes sense to bring it before us, or maybe before the Planning Commission. But, you know, at this time, you know, I don't know, I mean, I'm uncertain about why we would do it if we've already addressed it.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I think legal does need to respond to the letter. I mean, I do.
Yeah, and I'd like to get analysis from our legal, from our city attorney about the merits of the letter, which I assume...
And perhaps that's something that needs to be done in closed session if it's legal analysis.
I just wanted to make sure that I was getting the direction from the council in terms of what it wanted, and, and we can certainly put together, you know, a response concerning the legal issues that are raised in the letter, or the petition, or whatever you want to call it. And just as an aside, in, in response to the council discussion about the FAA letter, it seems to me that that would been, I think that the mayor indicated that he was raising that at that point in the agenda rather than under the mayor council items concerning what his role has been with respect to the airport issue, and certainly had that, had you had that discussion at that time rather than earlier, it would have been appropriate to say you wanted some kind of letter to come back for the council to consider. So in my mind, you were not treating that differently than you were treating comments made by other members. You simply were having the discussion earlier in the evening rather than later in the evening. So to me, there was no, you were not treating the situation differently, you were simply having a discussion at an earlier time because it was apropos.
Yes. No, you're right. Okay. Thank you, Michael. So we are at the end, almost at the end of our meeting for the regular council meeting. We're at oral communications number two. Paul?
Paul Biscala, Brisbane resident. I want to thank staff and council for making the determination to keep the planning commissioners through the EIR process. They've been very thorough and diligent in their oversight, and so it makes a big difference having people that are up to speed. So that was a really good determination, and I want to thank council member O'Connell for looking into the possibility, putting this on the agenda about the letter. I personally didn't feel that there was any treatment given towards the discussion at the FAA. It was my concern that there was really no comments being made as to, in response to my comments. That's where my concern lied. I didn't feel as though theirs had any more weight than mine. I just saw there was lots of interactive discussion and was curious as to why there was no discussion about what I said. I wasn't looking for any definite decisions to be made. As I stated, you were within your right to make the determination that you made. The letter was an attempt to stave off something like that from happening in the future. That's what that was about. We missed the boat. Had we done it in a timely manner, when you first made your first reading on the rezoning, things could have been entirely different. It's the last thing members of this community wanted to do. While there were three of us that put our money forward and signed our name onto that letter, there are lots of members in this community that are just as concerned. So, you know, like I said, you guys represent the community and make decisions for the community. Unfortunately, there aren't a lot of people in this community that show up at very important meetings. It's super unfortunate. You know, things are going to happen in this community, and people will be like, well, how'd that happen? Well... Well, you know, I've been in Brisbane since 1982, and we used to meet in the council chambers that was one-fifth the size of this room, and on a summer night when it got hot, you know, chairs were flying in there. I mean, it's, we're a lot more civilized today, because a lot of things are being done correctly. I was kind of curious as to what the comment council member Conway had, and if it's something that could be brought up when this is agendized, then I would wait for it then, but if he'd be willing to share with me what he wanted to say, I'd, I'd be interested, because it's important, you know, I need feedback. And this isn't, this wasn't a personal attack on council members or staff, it's just, you know, when you made the comment about the FAA not following the rules, I mean, you know, I don't want to use the word loopholes, but when there are, you know, six, seven, 10 different items on how you can list something, and one of those items says that, well, you know, you need to do an analysis, I mean, you know, there's, you didn't have to, but you should have, so that's what my comments were about, and that's what the letters are all about, so if I could hear something from council member Conway, I would look forward to it.
All right, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
You okay with it, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, no, I, I am, you know, but I just want to say that I thought Paul raised a good point, and, you know, we tend to, I guess, we, we run our meetings different than other councils do, right, and we take pride in that. We've, you know, had councils, we've had folks from the public speak for very long periods of time, as, other councils that I've spoken to, they, they don't, you know, and.
Two minutes.
You know, two or three minutes.
Two minutes.
Then never multiple times, there's really never any exchange with the public, they take the comments, and then maybe they'll address those, maybe they'll write down some questions, address it with staff, maybe talk amongst each other, but never back and forth, and, and, and so Paul was right, I mean, here, we, we had that exchange with folks who were interested in the airplane noise, but not in his issue, and it's like, okay, well, is that really fair?
Well, that's what I wanted to.
And so, okay.
If I addressed that, it'd clear it up real fast, because, you know, Paul, I just wanted to point out what the difference was, you know, of what you had brought up, and why we can't discuss it, because this is something that is being brought as a legal issue, that you're bringing up as a legal issue, and we need feedback from our legal department, and they're not ready to give that feedback yet, because they need to look in here, because at the end of this letter, you're saying have no choice but to seek legal remedies, that wasn't read, okay, that's a threat of lawsuits, so that makes a legal remedy, that's not something that we can say is discussed, so it's really different than what we were discussing with the FAA. The FAA was, we're talking about noise, and it's, it's a joint thing that we're discussing versus something that is brought up about a decision that we made as a collective body that requires our legal department to take a look at. And so this, it's really two different issues, kind of like apples and oranges, say, not to say that yours isn't as important, you know, it's surely important, but there's a protocol that we have to follow, and that's why our lawyer is asking to, for that feedback, and that's what I wanted to say.
Yes, and, and, you know, and how about this, Paul, if you want to talk about it in further detail, say with Clark, you know, by all means, do it after the meeting.
So, if I may, there are no legal proceedings.
Yeah.
There, we're not bringing anything, I, like I said, had we been on board with this on the first reading, that would have been the case, but there are no legal proceedings being brought forward.
Okay, but I'm just, I'm going by just the letter, okay?
Yeah, well, that, okay, so, and, but there's also information in there that states that we realized that the date, we missed that date.
Not, not in this one, I don't think.
Anyway, Paul, we're going to address it.
All right.
As a council, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, can I take, can I have a motion to adjourn to the successor agency?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, successor agency.
She has to change the tape, I think.
Don't go in.